Good evening. All right, we'll let people trickle in at 6:30. We'll give people a couple of minutes to trickle on in. And we'll get started. Want to make sure MCAT, Rick, I should have cleared this with you. Make sure we're broadcasting. I think we're live. Okay, we'll be live. We're good to go. All right. Well, good evening. I'm Colin Woodrow with Missoula Neighborhoods, and I want to thank you for joining us tonight for the first of three Missoula City Council candidate forums. The purpose of the candidate forum is to give Missoula voters an opportunity to submit written questions, to hear candidate responses, and to become better informed voters for upcoming election. Because of COVID-19, the forums are being broadcast virtually via Zoom and on MCAT. Tonight, we will all learn a bit more about the candidates for Ward Five, who could represent Franklin to the Fort, Miller Creek, Moose Can Gully, South 39th, South Gate Triangle, and the Two Rivers Neighborhoods. We will also hear from the Ward Six candidates, who could represent Franklin to the Fort, Two Rivers, and the River Road Neighborhoods. The Missoula Neighborhoods Office handled all the communication with candidates in setting up this forum. Candidates for all events were invited to participate and contacted several ways to ensure they received the invitation via email, certified mail, and if no response, phone calls. By agreeing to participate, candidates agreed to follow the rules for the forum. We'd like to thank Missoula Community Access Television for broadcasting and making broad access to our community possible. The League of Women Voters of Missoula for helping organize and moderate these forums, with special thanks to Nancy Maxon and Nancy Lifer. And I want to thank Missoula Neighborhood Councils and the leadership teams, the residents and current city council members for submitting questions for our candidates tonight. With that, I'll briefly introduce our panelists, starting with our candidates. We have current Ward Five Representative Stacy Anderson, Ward Five Candidate Robert Campbell, Ward Six Candidate Kristen Jordan, Ward Six Candidate Tom Taylor, Missoula Neighborhood Staff Member Kelly Ehlum, and with the League of Women Voters, Jennifer Copley is our timer, although I do this. Okay, Jennifer, all right, Jennifer Copley is on, wonderful. And Nancy Lifer is our moderator tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to Nancy. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Nancy Lifer, and I am the co-president of the Missoula League of Women Voters, and I welcome you all to this candidate forum. In the spirit of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I'd like to begin by reading our league land acknowledgement statement and also that of the city of Missoula. "We call our home Montana and celebrate its grandeur. Most of us or our families settled in Montana only decades ago. For centuries and millennia, indigenous peoples honored this land. They named its rivers and meadows, venerated its mountains, and cherished its abundance. We acknowledge and respect the sovereign tribal nations and peoples who have always lived here. And the city of Missoula acknowledges that we are in the Aboriginal territories of the Salish, Kootenai, and Kalispel people. Today, we honor the path they have always shown us in caring for this place for the generations to come." Well, Tuesday is Election Day, November 2nd, and this evening and the next two Wednesdays, we're going to be having some public forums. The purpose is to give Missoula voters an opportunity to submit written questions to the candidates and hear their responses. We had 55 questions submitted for this evening's forum, and we unfortunately can't answer all of them, so we've chosen some in four different categories to be for our questions this evening. The way that the evening will go is it will begin by having each candidate have two minutes to give an opening statement. Then we will go to taking questions that we have from the public in four different areas. One area being affordable housing and infrastructure, another being taxes and budget, the third one on being a councilman, and the last one on other. The other is an interesting category. And then we will end with three-minute closing statements from each of the candidates as well. And then I will have a few words to say about the process of voting, and Colin will send us up or wrap everything up at the very end. So that's the outline for the evening. So I would like to then start by having going right to our two-minute opening statements from our candidates. Jennifer, are you ready to time? Can you just hold up one of your cards just right now so we can see what it'll look like? Okay, everybody can see that? Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Jennifer. Alrighty, then we drew names out of a literal hat. That's right here. To figure out who was going to go in what order. And so we're going to begin this first question with Tom Taylor. Tom, you are there and on screen, and if you unmute yourself, you can give your two-minute opening statement.
All right. Well, first off, thank you for inviting me. It's been, it's been a different journey, let's put it that way. This is definitely a new experience across the board for me. I've grown up in Missoula my whole life. I haven't necessarily been involved in very much of it, but this year, the past couple of years, I decided to get more involved and to try to represent Missoula in my ward the best I can. I've been living in Ward Six for, I'd say, six years now, but I've lived in Missoula my entire life. So it's always, it's nice to see how things have changed. It definitely has grown. I mean, I can remember all the time when Reserve Street was just one lane, and then now it's two lanes and you can't get anywhere. So that's all I got. Keep it short.
Thank you, Tom. Our next candidate is Stacy Anderson.
Are you ready, Nancy? All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Stacy Anderson, and I'm the current city council representative for Ward Five, and I'm running for reelection this fall. I am proud to have been born and raised in Montana. I grew up in Kalispel, and my father was a police officer, and then he became a firefighter, and he retired after over 20 years on the Kalispel Fire Department. My mom is a CPA and was a tremendous volunteer in our community, both in our church and my sister-in-law's classrooms. My family spent a lot of time talking about public service and how it's a noble endeavor, and how it takes all of us in big and small ways to show up to make our community work. And I feel serving on the city council is the best way I can play my part. Missoula was always the cool town we'd come visiting to, to go school clothes shopping or concerts, attend Grizz games. Both my parents attended the University of Montana, and I'm a proud alumni as well. I was at the University of Montana where I met my husband Mark, who's from Helena, and we met in a modeling United Nations class. I consider myself so very lucky to call Missoula home. It's a wonderful community with amazing people. I'm also lucky to have had the professional experiences in my life to work for a governor and a member of Congress. What I think is so important about municipal government, it's the building blocks of our community. It's the things most people take for granted, and they don't notice when they're living their everyday lives. Missoulians want to be able to get from point A to point B. They want to turn on their tap and have clean drinking water. They want to flush their toilets and have it go somewhere and not pollute the environment. They want to know if they have to call 911, a professional, well-trained first responder will quickly be there to help them. And when they have a bit of free time with their family and friends, they want to go outside and enjoy a bit of nature, either a neighborhood park or a more rugged open space setting. All of these things don't come together easily. It takes planning and intention, and it takes balance. And I'm excited to answer many of your questions tonight to talk about how we've done that and the challenges we have going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy. Our next candidate is Kristen Jordan.
Hi there. I do want to start by thanking Missoula Neighborhoods and the League of Women Voters of Missoula for providing the opportunity tonight to hear from and respond to Missoula voters. I'm running for Ward Six because I love living in Ward Six, and I want to ensure that my neighbors continue and also love living in Ward Six. We're looking at a lot of changes in Ward Six, and I'd like to be the voice of the residents as their representative. I'm passionate about local government. I believe that cities and counties are the laboratories of democracy. Relevant decisions can be made that show immediate results, whether they're good or bad. The effects of local government are immediately palpable, and I'd like to be a part of that process. As a data and policy analyst, I will bring my experience in using data to make decisions. For example, I played a key role in getting Missoula's Mobile Crisis Team up and running through the results of conversations with stakeholders and strategic planning with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and the outcomes of a sequential intercept mapping project that looks at the intersection of available mental health resources at different points within the criminal justice system. All showed a significant need for a mobile crisis team. I secured the funding for the city, or from the city and from the county, and played a lead role in applying for a cramped and security vendor for the RFP. I also want to bring a unifying approach to city council. I lived overseas for 14 years and came back to a really divided America. I believe that if you sit down and chat with anybody long enough, you can find common ground, and I'd like to use this approach to bridge divides and ensure unifying outcomes. Finally, I want to be an accessible representative. I'd like to hear from constituents and ensure that their issues are raised at the city level. I plan to host town halls, provide regular updates, and be available for drop-in visits via weekly office hours. I want my constituents to know that I hear them, care about what they think, and will work to address their concerns. The specific issues I'm most passionate about are criminal justice reforms, ensuring public safety while reducing harm to those who are criminal justice involved. And I'm running out of time. I'd also really focus on affordable housing and have some ideas behind that, but definitely want to hear from constituents. Thank you for your time listening, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Kristen. And now we go to Bob Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Thank you to the League of Women Voters in Missoula and Missoula Neighborhoods for putting on this forum tonight. My name is Bob Campbell, candidate for Missoula State Council here in Ward Five. I've been living here in the Missoula community for the past 22 years as a law enforcement officer and supervisor. As a public servant, I've, of course, been quite engaged in Missoula community over that time, but my experience in local government goes further, spanning over 31 years total. I worked as the land use planner for five years, including three years in Gallion County. During that time, I reviewed subdivisions, developed zoning ordinances alongside community zoning workshops, conducted statistical analysis for general land use plans, floodplain management, and maintaining relationships with developers, surveyors, and the general public and communities I've served. Today, I'm proud to call Missoula my home. It's a deeply caring community, observing firsthand in how we support one another, among those who taught and coached my children in public school, and with those dedicated to helping persons in less fortunate circumstances. Missoula is a place I would love to see my children grow and prosper on their own. Unfortunately, their ability to do this is in peril. Higher taxes and fees for businesses and real property, failings in infrastructure, drug addiction, and mental health crisis that translates into increased incidents of crime and growing homelessness. The mayor and controlling leadership insist on a path as work set to work against working families, insatiable appetite to grow government, stifled small business, and the gentrification of entire generation of Missoulians. Over the course of this evening, you'll no doubt observe a contrast between my opponent and I. On council, I'll work to rein in unnecessary spending and protect your tax dollars. Limit the scope and reach of government, work towards creating the conditions necessary for affordable housing, invest in mental and behavioral health services, and fully fund our emergency services. I believe these are common sense things made by most Missoulians, and I look forward to more detailed discussion this evening. Thank you very much.
And thank you. All right, our first question, then, we'll change the order out. Our first question will go to Stacy Anderson, and this is in the area of housing and infrastructure. The same question will go to all of you. So if you'd like me to repeat the question as we go through four people out, it gets a little hard to remember what it was. So I can repeat it as needed. Just ask me if you'd like me to repeat it. But this question will be answered by all four candidates. "What restrictions specifically do you think should be placed on the homeless camping within the city, and what laws should limit their camping and protect private property owners?"
Thanks so much for that question. I do think that there should be restrictions on where camping should take place. It should be in a temporary safe outdoor space, similar to what we have out here in the county, past the Buck House Bridge. That project has been incredibly successful because it has provided wraparound resources, security, sanitation. I know the county is looking to stand up several more of those. So it is safe for the residents who are calling that home, and it is safe for the surrounding neighborhoods as well. So I think we need to do more of those types of projects as well as addressing the overall lack of affordable housing. And one of those ways we're doing that is through the creation of the Trinity Project, which is an affordable housing unit that is specifically targeted at those in our community making the lowest area median incomes, as well as having a in our units for those in our community who are chronically housing in low barrier units as well. So there are things that we are currently doing. There is more to be done, but it's a multifaceted approach. But I do not think that Missoulians should, there should be sanctioned camping spots where services can be provided. And that would be one of, and that those are the things we're working on currently.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Next, the question goes to Kristen Jordan. Again, what restrictions do you think should be placed on the homeless camping? What laws should limit and protect private property owners?
Um, well, I think that we definitely need to make sure that we're providing options for homeless folks as far as accessing safe places to live and reside. I do think that we have failed our homeless population because we do have folks camping on the river and in places that aren't sanctioned. I fully support the temporary outdoor space. I fully support funding the Pavarello. I fully support the Mobile Crisis Team and the homeless outreach teams that go out and provide services to homeless people. I think something that's really important to remember as a taxpayer is that it usually ends up costing more to ignore homeless people than it does to actually provide services for them. And you see those costs through increased law enforcement and visits to the jail and to the hospital. I think it's also really important for constituents to remember that local jurisdictions are getting the brunt of the tax bill and the social service requirements, and that it just is costing more because we're getting less and less from the state and the federal government. And so it's not just necessarily something that we're doing locally. It's something that's happening from the top down, and I would like to help.
Thank you, Kristen. Next, we go to Bob Campbell. Do you want me to repeat the question?
If you would, please.
"What restrictions specifically do you think should be placed on the homeless camping within the city? What laws should limit their camping and protect private property owners?"
Thank you for that question. That's a good question. So being a law enforcement, of course, you know, that's something we deal with on a day-to-day basis, and particularly illegal camping that's taking place within the city limits. Fortunately, there is a court case out of Boise, Idaho, that kind of puts restraints on how we can enforce that ordinance unless there's a available shelter or some other place for those folks to go. We cannot kick them out of any particular place, such as under the Reserve Street Bridge or the island or what have you. So I think it is necessary and appropriate to have some sort of temporary safe outdoor shelter in place. However, having said that, you know, I know the mayor's talked about and the county commissions talked about that and have that shelter in place, but there needs to be accountability on the other end. Accountability that when that shelter's set up, that we do clean up that mess that's gone on under the Reserve Street Bridge and that we've had previously under the island on West Broadway, and follow up on that. And if I'm on council, I'll make sure that we hold out people's feet to fire to make sure that that accountability is in place for those people that have that outdoor shelter available to them.
Thank you. And now we go to Tom Taylor. Tom, do you want me to repeat the question? Hope you're muted.
All right. Yes, please. Repeat it.
"What restrictions specifically do you think should be placed on the homeless camping within the city? What laws should limit their camping and protect private property owners?"
I believe Bob hit it on the head as well when he mentioned that there are already laws in place for the no camping, except for we do have to provide a place for them to go. I think just moving people around is just basically putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm. I think we need to focus more on the affordable housing problem so people do have options. It starts, it goes between both sides of the aisle for what people need to do. We just need to make it to where we can push for easier to get people into homes, and we also need to push for more homes available. Part of that is just trying to get younger people into the trades versus other things, so they have skills to be able to provide for themselves. And that also helps build houses, and the more houses we have, the better it is for everyone.
All right. Thank you. So we'll go on to the next question, and the first person to answer the next question will be Kristen Jordan. The question is, "Do you think all neighborhoods have a role to play in building more homes to help with our housing needs, including making homes that Missoulians can afford?"
I do, and I think this is a tricky one because we have a lot of really lovely homes in certain parts of town that have big lots and are accessible to services that perhaps could see some infill. And I see neighborhoods like our neighborhood in Ward Six that is getting lots of infill and other neighborhoods that are not getting lots of infill. And I think that infill is a really good way to address homelessness, but I do think it's not equal across all the neighborhoods. And I don't know what the answer is, but I'd like to do some research into how we can encourage more building in all parts of Missoula while maintaining the culture of Missoula and, you know, the peaceable and presence and beautiful neighborhoods that we do have. But I do think it's completely unfair, and it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. This question now goes to Bob Campbell.
Yes, thank you. So Missoula has a growth policy, of course. Zoning is there to implement growth policy. Unfortunately, there's zoning that we have in place right now. The two don't match, very outdated. I know Erin Peahan over at Community Development, Playing and Innovation, is working on updating that. You know, that'd be first and foremost on my mind if I'm on state council, to make sure that that takes place and occurs. As far as housing affordability goes, make housing available. Look, I mean, that's something, it's all hands on deck. It's streamline the process for developers. It's making sure that, you know, people have a place to go, that we have a vacancy rate that's high enough to allow people to come in and have available housing, or even the rental market, having affordable housing available and having those options available to them. I was recently endorsed by Missoula Organization Realtors on this. They see in me the value in my dedication, based on my playing experience, to have a situation where we could allow folks to come in, developers to come in, work through a streamlined development review process to get those projects dug, get shovels in the ground to get those developments going.
Thank you, Bob. Now we go to Tom Taylor.
Could you repeat the question for me?
Sure. "Do you think all neighborhoods have a role to play in building more homes to help with our housing needs, including making homes that Missoulians can afford?"
I do. I do believe that all Missoulians should be able to live here. What we have right now is we have a system that doesn't doesn't allow the developers to be able to know exactly what's going on. There's a guessing game that goes on with it. There's multiple reviews that go through the same projects. It hinders a lot of projects as far as being able to get them off the ground and going. They need to make it more predictable for the developers, is what I'm looking for. And as far as the infill lots, they should just be left up to the private property owners, what they want to do to that. But as far as somebody wanting to do it, if they want to split the lot to move on to build another house, they need to be more welcomed into that system. Right now, there's the township exemptions that's helpful at times, and then also a hindrance in others to get the development to go through. You're talking six months to a year on some small projects, and it doesn't need to take that long, especially in Ward Six where I'm running. We don't have a lot of land. It's all infill for the entire thing.
Okay, thank you, Tom. And Stacy Anderson?
Thanks so much for that question. I think it's really important to first point out that Montana is a property rights state, so so much of the laws that we govern, how we grow, and subdivisions are decided at the state level. The other thing that happened at the state level is during this last legislative session, there was a bill that basically bans communities like Missoula, like Bozeman, like Whitefish from putting in any sort of inclusionary zoning requirements on affordable housing. So, you know, our hands are somewhat tied. I do agree that growth needs to happen in all sectors of our community, and I do believe it is. And it's, you know, kind of availability of lots, availability of land. You know, we are seeing tremendous growth in our community. We have over the last couple of years. Yes, the Office of Development is working hard to keep up with that growth and the requests for building permits and reviews. I do think that that process is very straightforward, and the developers do know it. But, you know, Erin Peahan and her innovation has reached out to the development community and worked with them to say, hey, we're going to raise a couple of very targeted fees, and what we're going to do with that money is to raise, oh, you're done, Nancy. Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking for you for the stop. Okay.
No, no, it's Jennifer that has the stop. Okay. Can you see her?
Okay, now I know where to look for it because you were first on the screen. Okay.
Alrighty, alrighty. Okay, so our next question will go to Bob Campbell first, and this is a question about transportation. "How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in our city? Do we have enough, or if not, what would you do to increase it?"
Yes, thank you for the question. Obviously, we have multimodal points of transportation here in Missoula. I mean, everything from pedestrian to bicycles, and I think Missoulians are pretty proud of, you know, having those options available, as well as mountain lion transportation services through the Missoula Urban Transportation District. And of course, at the end of the day, though, by and large, our transportation system is centered around automobiles and transportation that way and getting to and from work and to and from wherever it is you want to go shopping. And obviously, that still has been a forefront of our minds in terms of our transportation planning in town here, at least I think so. Having said that, now I know Mountain Lion's got a great system in place. They're updating their buses. I don't go into all electric vehicles. There's a cost associated with that. That's burned on taxpayers. I think Mountain Lion users should have some skin in the game, so to speak. It wouldn't take much to have maybe a $10 a month or a $12 a month bus pass, much like what Billings has now for seniors and those of need financially to be able to use the bus and yeah, and take some of the burn off the taxpayers that may or may not use the transportation system.
Okay, thank you. Next, we go to Tom Taylor.
Thank you. Did you repeat the question for me?
"How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in our city? Do we have enough options, or if not, what would you do to increase them?"
Missoula has a lot of options, let's put it that way. It's similar to the bike options, the bike pass, like the Milwaukee Trail that runs right down through Missoula. That thing finally got completed in the last couple of years, and it's been incredibly helpful. My family lives right close to it, and it does go a long ways, and you'd be surprised at what you can find going up and down that. It's very quick. If you were to time yourself on a car, the bicycle's definitely going to be faster. As far as cars need to go, I think roundabouts are definitely becoming more and more popular. And the more and more people use them, the better they are for stuff versus streetlights and jamming up traffic. Obviously, nobody likes traffic and but they're the same person sitting in their car. So you have to, there's a balance for all of it. The Mountain Lion, the user should have some skin in the game for it to help relieve some of the taxes off of the homeowners. I know my personal tax bill is about $200 a year, and I haven't set foot on a bus. So if they can put a little bit of skin in the game for it, it's, you know, it's all the better for everybody, I think.
Thank you, Tom. We next go to Stacy Anderson, and again, watch Jennifer.
Thanks so much. I definitely have my eyes on Jennifer. I think that, yes, Missoula has a very aggressive multimodal split goals. We want to make our transportation system work for bicycles, pedestrians, and cars. Having a very robust transportation system helps with the cost for many homeowners. Yes, we have a zero fare system, and that system actually is provided mainly in conjunction as a really great example of a public-private partnership. The mall contributes to it. Both the hospitals contribute to it. Over 40 businesses contribute to helping so that we can have zero fare. Many students in Missoula take the bus, use Mountain Lion to get to school if bus service is not provided for them. So this is a great example of us leveraging, you know, municipal dollars and the private sector to provide a really important service to our community with very limited you know, cost to the greater Missoula community.
Okay, thank you. And last, we have Kristen Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with a lot of what's been said. We have a lot of options. I think that Missoula has been voted one of the best biking towns in the country. I think that it doesn't take long to drive a lot of places unless it's between 8:30 in the morning and 9:30 in the morning or 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock at night. And it's a pretty accessible town. You know, I'm knocking on doors right now, and what I'm hearing from constituents, though, is that they would like to see more bus routes and more times. People want to use it, but it's not necessarily the most convenient means of transportation for them. And so I don't know if it's a possibility or not, but looking at how we can increase the routes and the times available. Another thing that constituents are talking about, and this is kind of an aspirational, yet I think relevant observation, is that, you know, Ward Six is kind of a, it's kind of, it's a very residential area, and so we kind of have to drive everywhere to get to the shops. And it would be interesting to see if perhaps a neighborhood store might fill in some of those gaps and allow people to use their cars less. and allow people to use their cars less. I agree with Tom about roundabouts. I think roundabouts are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, we're now going to move to a question on taxes. And our first responder is Tom Taylor. So the question is, if Missoula, as some claim, has taxes that are too high, how do you explain the large influx of new residents and investors to this mountain town? And how would you change the allocation of tax expenditures?
Currently, I would agree that we are taxed too much as far as people coming here. It's a beautiful place is what it really comes down to. Like, it is a wonderful place to live. And part of that is you're going to have to pay to play, basically, is the words for it. It's a we can move to the central of North Dakota where it gets 40 below and you'll pay a lot less in taxes and you'll pay a lot less for your house, but you don't have the beauty like we have right here and we need to encourage that. But we need to watch out for the taxing. It can't be just free for all, basically. We need to hold back a little bit and really make sure that our dollars count where they go and make sure they're going to good things. And basically, so people get the most out of their dollar. So it's already expensive enough. We don't need to make it worse.
Thank you, Tom. Next, this question goes to Stacy Anderson.
Thanks so much for that question. I think it's important to realize that only about 29% of your overall tax bill actually is what the city portion is. And our two biggest components of our city budget are our police and fire departments. So the, I do agree that we are on an unsustainable trajectory for property taxes. But I think that when you think about all the factors that go into it, the Department of Revenue and Helena is the one that sets the overall price of what your taxable value of your home is. Over 45% of your taxes go to state schools and local schools. 21% go to the county and like I said, 29% goes to the city. I think that as we're called upon to provide more public services as the legislature cuts, makes cuts, then we need, and we only have one way to fund it. We need to figure out how to diversify our income stream. And I am definitely an advocate for tax reform. I think we need to look at other options and I'm all for a local option sales tax to target the over $200 million of outside spending that happens in Missoula County a year.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, Kristen.
I think minus all the details, Stacy took my answer. Thanks, Stacy. Look, I think we can't control who moves here. You know, I think that every jurisdiction is growing and changing and we can't keep Montana the same way it's been for the last 200 years. And we're going to have out-of-state people moving in. And I think that this out-of-state money is coming from places where people get paid more. And I think that that's one thing that has been hard about living in Montana is, as Tom mentioned, we pay the wilderness tax. And I think that having people coming in with different revenue, different, different ways that they've earned their money or how they earn their money is really important. But I also really want to reiterate what Stacy said and that we have been, we've had our hands tied by our state legislators and how we can collect tax dollars. And we largely have to rely on property taxes to fund our social service network. And I also just reiterate again that, you know, the feds and the state have really cut down on just general tax dollars that they're providing. And so it's on us to find ways to pay. And I also support a local option sales tax as well.
Thank you, Kristen. And our last, last person on this particular candidate, like last, is Bob Campbell.
Yes, thank you. So as far as people coming to Missoula and Montana in general, I think telework is a big part of that. I have a stepdaughter and her husband have recently moved here into town, take advantage of that situation. They are native Montanans, or she is, and wanted to get back and their job allows them to do so. But look, this 29% narrative that I'm hearing lately has been our tax, our tax is a lot more than that 29%. We get taxed in a lot of the ways in this town here. Special district tax, road special district tax, developer fees, impact fees, user fees, tourism taxes on hotel stays, fines, hookups, entrance fees for aquatics. And that's a thing that needs subsidies besides that through a course of the year, every year. SIDs, TIF, hopefully get a chance to talk about more of that later. Talk about Mountain Lion and the zero fare, the Missoula Transportation District Tax that's on your tax bill. Look, there are a lot more taxes than just that 29% taking place here in the Missoula area. As far as the local option sales tax goes, I mean, look, that's a regressive tax. It's going to hurt the lower class more than anybody else. And if it comes to Missoula, it's the citizens that pay it 52 weeks a year tourism, what, or two weeks a year? Makes no sense.
Okay, thank you. And our next question will start with Stacy Anderson. And the question is, do you believe money for improvements in Missoula is fairly distributed across neighborhoods? And what evidence can you offer to support this position?
Thanks for that question. I think it's a little bit misleading because, you know, what does it mean, you know, money evenly distributed? I think a lot of it goes to where there's growth, where we need to invest in infrastructure to support that growth. You know, depending on the makeup of the various communities, the services that are being provided. And so I think that there are things that are trying, that are being invested all across the community that all Missoulians can take advantage of. For example, our Invest Health Initiative that is trying to point at the, you know, social determinants of health that is trying to, you know, fund resources that way, making sure that schools in lower-income neighborhoods have access to free and reduced lunch. We started a really innovative pilot project with the Lowell School District using CARES funds to provide with the Parks and Recreation Department wraparound services for both before and after-school care. It's something that that community didn't have. So I think it depends on what it is you're thinking of as in terms of the various investments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Next, this question goes to Kristen Jordan.
Look, I think this question is probably getting at TIF and how the MRA spends TIF funds. I do think that there's some room for improvement in how we spend our TIF dollars. I think that a lot of Missoulians don't feel like they're seeing that money coming back to them and improving their neighborhoods. I think that a lot of Missoulians don't understand how the MRA makes their decisions. I don't really understand how they make their decisions, but I would like to see some, you know, I know City Council is working on revising how the MRI prioritizes its funding. But I would like to find out more about this issue and make sure, I mean, again, knocking on the doors, constituents don't understand TIF. They think it's not being spent wisely, they think. And I think that, you know, it'd be great to get some answers to taxpayers. But I also hear what Stacy Anderson is saying in that there's a lot of the spending that we don't see and that we don't necessarily tie to those funds, that we probably need to do a better job of making sure people understand how we are spending that money in a way that benefits everyone.
Thank you, Kristen. Question now goes to Bob Campbell.
Thank you. So with TIF, I'm not anti-TIF, but I'm for judicious use of TIF. And I think the city in recent years has used that all budgeted and judiciously, so to speak. A lot of corporate handouts through use of TIF funds. I'm looking at the statement net position from seeing Missoula from June 30th last year. $38 million in long-term debt that the MRA has hanging around their neck. $38 million. And that's all for those urban renewal districts. That's all those TIF projects. Case in point, we have Washington Partners down here at Southgate Mall. Those guys declared bankruptcy. This is the TIF project, $6.3 million in TIF money plus $3.5 million in interest. So $10 million that we hold the bag to, they declared bankruptcy. They're going to get a sweetheart deal in district court, or we're left holding the bag on those TIF funds. If I'm on council, much more judicious use of TIF. It's supposed to abate blight. It's supposed to take care of blight and we're using it for corporate handouts and we're buying blight, things like the sleep in and so forth. So it needs a lot of reform.
Thank you. And now to Tom Taylor.
Thank you. Could you repeat the question for me?
Do you believe money for improvements in Missoula is fairly distributed across neighborhoods? What evidence can you offer to support your position?
So I've worked at our current company for about 10 years now. Doing a, we do, I do estimates for civil projects and that includes city water main projects, city sidewalks, curbs. And the projects that we get to bid on and we do them and then you get to see somebody walking their dog down the sidewalks. It is nice. People do enjoy it. I think those things are the things that people can get to see and they can use. The parts that they don't get to, that they don't like are when city is buying hotels and buying up property for their own projects when they're taking over the place of the developers. They need to go back and work on parks, sidewalks, things like that. Things like individual residences and some neighborhoods never had an opportunity for. The neighborhood I live in was part of an SID a few years ago and we have sidewalks in front of our house. Two blocks over, nobody has them. So it does need to be pushed back toward that. Things like MRL Park, that was a great use of TIF funding. However, the hotel that everybody keeps talking about, not a good use for it. So we need to keep an eye on it and put some new blood in the game and let people, let people have a voice. Let them see where their money's going to.
Thank you, Tom. And so for our next question, we'll go first to Kristen Jordan. And the question is, in what ways do you feel you can invest in neighborhoods in order to help create a stronger connection between residents and government services? And can you think of investments that don't require city general funds? And the investment that may use that?
So I think that, you know, I'll just draw on my experience in working with my local neighborhood group, which is Franklin to the Fort Neighbors in Action. And it's, it's working really hard to make sure that neighbors know that they have neighbors who care about them. I'm not actually sure where the funds came from. This is something I do need to admittedly learn more about. But most recently, we applied for a grant and won $6,000 from the city that was used to fix up the turtles in Franklin Park. It was used to assist with our Sunday streets that we put on. We also used it to paint some roundabouts. But most importantly, we got neighbors involved and made sure that they were out there getting to know one another and working on really fun projects that make Franklin to the Fort and Ward Six unique. There was another part of your question that I'm now not remembering about innovative ideas, I think that don't use the general fund. I think this is something that I need to find out more about. But I think if nothing else, having regular, you know, dates at Franklin Park is a really good way to start or an area neighborhood so people know that they belong somewhere.
Thank you, Kristen. It now goes to Bob Campbell.
So I think Kristen brings up some pretty good points, actually, particularly with our community neighborhood organizations and getting them engaged, of course, with, you know, COVID being as it's been for the last year and a half or so. It's kind of hard to have those get-togethers like we had in years past. You know, a lot of the things we elect at are nonprofits, nonprofit organizations in town here. Local church groups get involved and local neighborhood, community outreach. Certainly, they have, you know, a large influence into what goes on at a neighborhood level. I also look to our homeowners associations. Not, of course, not everyone is part of a homeowners association, but some are bigger than the others. Then the Vista in my ward is a very large homeowners association and, you know, they have no funding to do different things. I'm a homeowners association. I was one-time president of my local homeowners association. We got some improvements done to our homes and had a block party of sorts at the conclusion of that years and years ago. So that was kind of fun to do. So, yeah, HOAs, nonprofits, community groups, good options there.
Thank you, Bob. We now go to Tom Taylor. You're muted, Tom.
Sorry about that. It's the exact opposite. So could you repeat the question one more time? There's a couple of parts to it there.
What ways do you feel you can invest in neighborhoods in order to help create a stronger connection between residents and government services? And can you think of investments that don't require city general funds?
The only thing that's been mentioned before is getting local homeowners associations, getting them involved in stuff. And if they have a concern, ask them. They know they're a part of it. Different church groups. The part without using general funds makes it tricky because my answer was sidewalks because it really does make a community better when you just walk over to your neighbor's house without walking in the street. So, yeah, getting those people together. I did participate shortly and I think it was one of the painting of those roundabouts. I don't know if it was Kristen that did it, but, or part of it, but it did. It's nice seeing people trying to take pride in their town. And we need to encourage that when you see somebody that wants to do that. They need to be helpful. And it's small things that really do matter, like $5,000 for something on that isn't going to be the tip of the iceberg. Like, it's going to make things better. Painting the turtles, stuff like that. It does make it better. So people can enjoy the parks. They can enjoy the bike trails. Time ran up.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. And Stacy.
Thanks so much for the question. I think it's really important to engage our community, to build plans so that they are the ones leading some of these projects. And, you know, we had a really robust process that engaged a variety of community stakeholders to develop our downtown master plan. And there has been a, quite a bit of public-private partnership going into renovating parks on the north side and the west side and looking for grants. And there's so much that the Office of Neighborhoods does through our neighborhood councils. And I think the grants that Kristen was talking about was a grant provided by the Office of Neighborhoods to, you know, have community members and neighbors come together and figure out a project that would benefit their community and apply for it. There is, you know, some things like the north side, west side softball games that bring people together. We are lucky that we live in a community where we have so many engaged residents and nonprofits. And we like to come together and build really thoughtful, innovative plans and then look for creative ways to fund it. And so I think we do that and we need to continue to do that. And I think the Office of Neighborhoods, to give you guys a shout out, is a key component of all of that.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, our next question now moves into the general category of being a councilperson. And we go to Bob Campbell first. And the question is, please explain how you will best use your time in service to the community and balance this with your other commitments.
So one of the first questions I get asked is, you know, being in law enforcement, you know, if I were elected, yes, I will step down from law enforcement. There's no conflict of interest there. So I can focus solely on doing this job, a job being a city councilperson. Bringing to bear, again, my 31 years of experience in local government, land use planning and law enforcement, are reaching out to the community. I've already, you know, in the past nine months or so, reaching out to Missoula Chamber of Commerce, Missoula Organization of Realtors, a number of groups here in town, firefighters, other emergency service providers in town here. And most importantly, gang out, talking to good folks here in Ward Five and my door knocking and, you know, hearing what they have to say and being responsive to them. You know, I have to give kudos to, he's not here tonight. Maybe he's watching Dan Carlino run in Ward Three. Good idea about, you know, having an open door policy, maybe one day a week, you know, just, you know, being somewhere you can be accessible to the public for a certain amount of hours a day and just have people come in, be able to engage you. I think it's a very good idea.
Thank you, Bob. Next, this question goes to Tom Taylor.
Need to be that guy, but could you repeat it one more time? I got engulfed in Bob's.
Sure. Please explain how you will best use your time in service to the community and balance this with your other commitments.
I do have some other commitments that have been, it's been a little bit of a challenge. So I won't even, won't lie to anybody there, but because I do work a full-time job that I can't bail on, obviously. I have, you know, like everybody else, we all got bills to pay and a family to take care of. So what I've, just talking to different residences, everybody, all the constituents, they all have different ways of communicating. And I've been pretty good about phone numbers, email addresses, things like that. They write me something. I respond to every single one of them. Like, it's unbelievable how many people actually reach out with like one-word things. And then just being able to, just being able to answer your phone and talk to somebody. Like, they, people bring up things that are incredibly valuable at times. People bring up some things that aren't so valuable too, but, you know, we got to weigh the differences. But there's things that get overlooked because we're all different people and we all have different views. And we all got to just put it together for what's best for the ward.
Thank you, Tom. And now this question goes to Stacy Anderson.
Thanks so much. I guess as the only incumbent here on this panel tonight, I think, you know, you have to be prepared for the meetings. You have to do your homework. You need to- you have to be prepared for the meetings. You have to do your homework. You need to reach out to staff to ask questions ahead of time so that you're prepared to, uh, participate in the robust discussions that we have on committees, most all day on Wednesdays, as well as attend Monday night city council meetings. We also have a lot of really great and active neighborhood councils. So attending all of those meetings, both as the general membership meetings and the, um, uh, leadership meetings, being able to, um, um, uh, participate in community meetings with various departments as big projects are coming around, uh, civic organization, service clubs. Um, it does take a time and it takes balance and it's something that I have demonstrated my willingness and my ability to do. It's also important to be accessible to constituents via phone, email, Facebook Messenger, all of those things. And I think I have a really good reputation of doing that.
Thank you, Stacy. And now we go to Kristen Jordan.
I think this is a really good question because, you know, like Tom said, we've all got lots of things going on. Um, you know, first, this job is a point two full-time equivalent, which is equivalent to one day a week. Um, I already know I'm going to spend more time doing it than one day a week. There's no way that I can be an effective city council representative and only work one day a week. Um, I have already, you know, I'm preparing for, um, this campaign. I'm already customizing my schedule to accommodate this time commitment. Um, you know, and like Bob said, uh, I totally agree with Daniel Carlino's idea of having, um, weekly office hours. I think it's a really great idea. I stole that from him too. Um, but I think that, um, being available in many different formats is going to be the way to really balance that schedule, um, and maintain kind of my day job. You know, as Stacy was talking about with Facebook Messenger and, um, coming to city council meetings. And, um, you know, I'd like to do town halls and I'd like to start doing a blog, um, to just update folks to make sure that they really understand what's going on and get the information in a format that accommodates their learning style.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, so now we'll go on to the next question. And this question goes first to Tom Taylor. The question is that the Missoula Neighborhood Council Leadership Teams have with input from residents compiled a summary of priorities. Among the priorities listed for Wards five and six are homelessness, transients, urban deer, streets and sidewalks. So the two questions are, um, what are your views on the best way to address these and other concerns and priorities? And what obstacles do you think that you will foresee in trying to address these?
First and foremost, this homelessness is a, it's a big concern. Homelessness, homelessness in itself is something we need all to just take, we need to, we all need to work together on to make a bigger bite out of it. It's, uh, there's a, there's a line between homeless and transients that we need to deal with. Um, that all comes together with the sidewalks they should be walking on, not being slept on. We need to not encourage that behavior. Sidewalks themselves need to be built in places that don't have them. Uh, we've seen, I've driven through neighborhoods after we've done, be done the before and after. And the ones after the sidewalks, you see people walking their dogs, taking their kids down to the park. They enjoy those things. Uh, when you walk down the street that doesn't have sidewalks in it, you end up with the snow on it, you're covered, you're trying to not slip and slide. And you have cars there. I mean, it's dangerous just in general and bringing people together. The urban deer thing, we just need to talk with Fish Wildlife and Parks to find the best way. Uh, and urban hunting season doesn't seem like it would be the greatest of ideas, but I think Fish Wildlife and Parks, they, they got a handle on it and they just need some help somewhere to, just to know where the deer are at, if there's a problem.
Thank you, Tom. This question now goes to Stacy Anderson.
Thanks so much. Um, I agree. I have heard many of those same priority lists while attending neighborhood council meetings over the last four years on city council. And I do think homelessness is not just a Ward five and six, uh, problem. It is a community-wide program, or problem, and we need to do more and we are. Um, like I mentioned earlier, we created, uh, the county created the temporary, uh, safe outdoor shelter out across Buck House Bridge. There was a lot of concerns from many constituents in my neighborhood about that. And it has turned out to be a really successful program. I live just right next to the sheriff and I was speaking with him the couple, other, couple of days ago and asked how many times has the sheriff's office been called out there? And he said hardly at all because it has staffing, uh, security. The people who live there have, uh, strict rules that they must abide by to be able to access those services. We also are doing a lot with, um, our, uh, you know, a larger plan to address affordable housing with the Velagio, uh, apartment complex coming online. That is going to be, when it opens next year, the, oh, I'm running out of time. I keep an eye on her. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Now to Kristen, Kristen Jordan.
Thank you. Um, you know, where I'd like to start really is to just ask constituents and, you know, I guess residents of Missoula to really remember that homelessness is a result of addiction and/or mental health and/or trauma issues. And I think they really need to step, take a step back and remember that these people are not on the streets because they want to. Um, I used to work with homeless people and, um, which is, uh, it is not necessarily a decision that they want. And if they say they want it, it's usually because they don't know what the alternatives are. And so I think that we really need to have compassion for people who are homeless. And remember that they have a skill set that isn't as complete as ours and that we need to give them some space. I also think that we actually not give them some space, but make sure we have the resources available for them. I also think we have a lot of things in the works that Stacy touched on that still haven't come to fruition yet that are really going to make a really big dent in our, in our homeless population. Um, as far as urban deer go, I think, you know, they were here first and we need to figure out how to live with them. Get your deer resistant plants, um, drive slowly at night. Um, and sidewalks is an M R A. I'd like to see the M R A paper for that.
Okay. Thank you, Kristen. Now we go to Bob Campbell.
Yes, thank you. So we kind of touched on this earlier with the temporary safe outdoor shelters. Uh, certainly, you know, because of case law, we need to have something in place for these folks to go. And, you know, I, I agree with Stacy on some of her points as well, you know, these are, you know, maintained, uh, these are staffed. And certainly it's a bear situation, what's going on under the Reserve Street Bridge. However, you know, this, the short-term flux of money for these shelters is not a long-term solution. Never has been, never will be, but, you know, that's, you know, where we seem to be throwing our money right now. Long-term and Kristen, you know, hit on it pretty well is, you know, mental health and drug addiction treatment. You know, giving these folks an opportunity to get that treatment, to get the assistance they need. Uh, House Bill 701 was passed by a recent legislature that allocates $25 million in funding. It's the Healing and Ending Addiction Through Recovery and Treatment Program. Wow. Um, $25 million to local communities. I'll make sure Missoula gets its fair share of that. Give these folks a chance to get that treatment so they can get back on their feet and get back on being productive members of, uh, Missoula once again.
Thank you, Bob. All right, we're moving on to the category of other. And the first question goes to Stacy Anderson. And here it is. The COVID-19 pandemic is exacting a severe toll across our country and the current wave of Delta variant infections places Montana in the severe risk category. What is your view of the 2021 Montana Legislature House Bill 702, which prohibits vaccine passports and makes it illegal to require vaccination?
Wow, hats off to whoever submitted that question. Absolutely. House Bill 702 basically, um, gutted our local city-county health department to be able to, um, address the needs that are arising in our community. Montana is the fourth largest state by geography. What is happening in Missoula and the Flathead may not be happening in Joplin. And we need to give the control and the authority to our local city-county health departments. Folks who are on there are experts in these areas. The folks at the legislature are not. Um, we need to be doing everything we can to keep our community safe. And one of the big things that we did to keep our community safe is the purchase of the Sleepy Inn, which is currently full. It is a place in our community to send those who are homeless, or who are experiencing homelessness, who need to quarantine or are, uh, close contacts. We will eventually sell that property and to a private developer. But in the meantime, it is providing a critical public service to keep those folks who have no other place to go, someplace to go in our community.
Thank you, Stacy. Kristen Jordan, the question goes to you next.
Thank you. Um, yeah, again, I'd like to reiterate what Stacy said and that the states really took away the power of local health officials. Um, for some reason, we have all become armchair experts and decided that we can Google things and find the answers that we need to accommodate what we think is right. We've lost our ability to really respect and trust the scientific leaders in our community. Um, I don't really understand the pushback on mandatory vaccines. Um, I remember when seat belts became an issue and we were all a little bit ticked off about it. But, you know, it was click it or ticket and we, we got used to it because it saved lives. Um, I think that, um, mandated, mandating vaccines has been tried and proven. You know, people want to say that the vaccine hasn't been tested properly, but it actually has. It's had a very robust concerted, um, testing, um, process and it's a safe vaccine. And I think it's really sad that people are opting not to have a vaccine that prevents, that will prevent them from getting really, really sick. Um, I don't really know about the vaccine cards. I think that maybe they might be a good idea during the pandemic, but they are an interesting approach to addressing an issue that I would like to do a little more research on.
Thank you, Kristen. We now go to Bob Campbell.
Yes, thank you. So just a word about vaccines to begin with. So I personally chose to get a vaccine, have someone close to my family that's, uh, immunocompromised. And of course with my, you know, work, um, exposed to a lot of different things. I've always had concerns about F A B C, H I V, uh, MRSA, what have you. This is just another one on the list. Um, I think the vaccine's safe. I think it's effective. I encourage people, go out and get vaccinated. Having said that, mandates ain't going to work. I don't think so. Um, for over a hundred years, through prohibition, through war on drugs, the federal government's been trying to, you know, keep us from putting things into our bodies, you know, alcohol, drugs, what have you. You know, how effective has it been over the last century? You know, I, I leave it for you to judge. And now we're going to come back with a mandate as far as what the federal government says going to be put into our bodies. Again, you know, me personally, I've been vaccinated, encourage others to do so, but I don't think of mandates tenable or, uh, workable.
Thank you, Bob. And now to Tom Taylor.
Could you, uh, throw that question out there one more time? It was a real good one.
You bet. The COVID-19 pandemic is exacting a severe toll across our country and the current wave of Delta variant infections places Montana in the severe risk category. What's your view of the 2021 Montana Legislature's House Bill 702, which prohibits vaccine passports and makes it illegal to require vaccinations?
I agree with House Bill 702. Whether people don't or not, I think it's up to the individual person to decide what they need to do with their own body and their own self. And as far as vaccine passports, I think it's also completely unnecessary. It's, uh, it's not something that needs to be taken lightly by any means. I do encourage people to make their own health choices based on what they need for themselves. But it's not for the government to be jumping in on somebody and telling them that they have to take this to be able to go somewhere or to be able to go do this or to be able to ride a city bus. I mean, it's very, it's up to each individual person. And part of that also eliminates discrimination based on vaccination status. So an employer can't fire somebody based on it. So that keeps people from pushing down their own views on somebody else who may not want to describe why they not put a vaccine in their, in their body. I know of one person that's gotten hospitalized from the COVID-19. I know one person who got hospitalized from the vaccine with blood clotting issues after it. Both it's on an individual basis and each one needs to take their own risk with their own reward. I mean, it's, it's up to the individual, not to the state to decide what to do.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, moving on to the next question, our first question goes to Kristen Jordan. And I mean, well, Kristen Jordan will answer the question first, excuse me. And here's the question, shifting the ground completely to a whole different topic. Should Missoula better enforce ordinances about sidewalk shoveling? Who should be responsible for shoveling public sidewalks at rentals, duplexes and other multifamily homes?
Sorry, but I, I, did Ms. Anderson get a chance to answer that last question? I spaced it.
She, she started.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I mean, I can tell that this is coming from a constituent who's probably having some concerns in this area. Um, I know that Missoula kind of has a policy of, um, oh gosh, I'm forgetting the term, but you know, that's, it's a, it's a reports-driven policy. So they're not going to drive around. I'm sure that Bob doesn't drive around looking for people who haven't shoveled their sidewalks. Um, however, it is a big safety issue and I think that, um, you know, and I don't know how much control city council could have over something like this, but it does make sense to make sure that somebody's shoveling sidewalks, um, if it's a multifamily residence. Uh, maybe they should hire a service to do it. Um, it should be paid for as part of rent or part of HOA fees. Um, it is a safety concern. Um, I personally have not had an issue with it at all, um, but I know other people do. And if, if this person is struggling with finding, um, a safe place to walk, I think that they should have somebody to talk to and, and get some help on, on figuring out how to make sure they feel safe in the winter time.
Thank you, Kristen. Now we go to Bob Campbell.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Should Missoula better enforce ordinances about sidewalk shoveling? Who should be responsible for shoveling public sidewalks at rentals, duplexes and other multifamily homes?
Well, I think you are, you know, in multifamily housing, I would hope there'd be some sort of homeowners association in place that be able to, um, look at taking care of that. We have a homeowners association here. Uh, we opt not to, uh, invest money into, uh, snow shoveling services around our sidewalks and our, um, town home area here. Uh, however, you know, other people may choose to make that decision. Um, I think Kristen's right. Uh, we certainly, you know, in law enforcement, do not have the time to go out to, uh, you know, be the, uh, snow shoveling police yet, you know, I can understand the concerns of, you know, some in the community, you know, elderly and whatnot. You know, that there should be some sort of services available to help those folks out and, you know, maybe through, I don't know, website, you know, Engage Missoula or some other forum to where, you know, we could bring that to the forefront and just, you know, increase public knowledge, um, of services, you know, maybe people get in, volunteer, uh, to, uh, offer those services. And then, um, in turn, those people near those services, um, could, you know, look to those persons, come out there and, uh, help them out in those given situations.
Thank you, Bob. And now we go to Tom Taylor.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This is, uh, snow shoveling is going to be a, it's a no-win situation. Like it's, you leave for morning for work, seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning. You have to have your sidewalk shoveled by nine. It snows at 10 o'clock all day long the next day. Yeah, people are going to walk on it during that time. It's a complaint-driven thing. No matter what, you're going to get people that don't. I think, uh, providing a service or anything like that is just a waste of money and a waste of time. But, uh, currently, right now, they'll send somebody out and they'll go knock on your door. It happens to be the utility inspector that we use at work. So I know her very well. And she just goes and knocks on people's doors and tells them, and then it gets dealt with or taken care of. It's a great use of time because she does a lot of the stuff in the winter time when we're doing our excavation work when it's frozen. So it's you also using it as a city employee that they already have and already have on the payroll to, to take time on that. I don't think it's a, I think it's important to shovel your own sidewalk, but I don't think it's a, um, such a major concern that people need to really take care of it. And at the end of the day, grab a shovel yourself, shovel your neighbor's sidewalk. They might need it someday. It's, I grab my neighbor's four-wheeler every now and then, we'll do like four or five in a row. So it's not a, oh, sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you. Although I was liking what you were saying very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so this, this question now goes to Stacy Anderson.
Thanks so much. Yes, as Kristen mentioned, it is, um, our current system is a complaint-based. And we really have, uh, for the most part, Missoulians are good homeowners and good neighbors and they look out for one another. There are those habitual offenders who do not take care of the sidewalk in front of their homes. And it's a safety hazard for, um, the neighbors who are trying to utilize sidewalks as a way to get to and from safely. It, uh, sidewalk accessibility is an important part of our multi, multi-modal goals we have in this community. Um, but for the most part, it isn't an issue. Um, and when it does become a habitual issue, uh, you know, there, we have processes and systems in place to take care of it. So, uh, for the most part, Missoulians take care of it themselves and are good neighbors. And, uh, but it is an important part of our overall state, uh, citywide infrastructure. And so, you know, for those of us who are really excited about the snow, I usually take some extra time and shovel my neighbor's walk because I'm the one who's happy the snow is there. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, well, we are now out of time for questions from the public and we're going to move to the section, uh, in which we will go to our, uh, final, uh, closing statements. And if I'm tracking correctly, I think And if I'm tracking correctly, I think Bob Campbell, you would go first. And we will have each, each candidate will have three minutes. And we will go ahead and start with you on the closing statements.
Yes, thank you. And thanks again to the League of Women Voters, Missoula and Missoula Neighborhoods for putting on this forum. Tonight, you've no doubt seen a difference in ideas and how move Missoula forward and the role local government should play in that future. My opponent believes local government has a large role to play in our everyday lives, strong hand in how we live, work, travel, and engaging in more and more activities that should be a domain of the private sector, perpetuating the need for those services, particularly among our homeless population, which we discussed tonight, without ever solving the homeless problem. We maintain a heavy bureaucracy in front of our development and business communities. All one has to do is look at my opponent's record the last four years on taxes, fees and spending. Has a 10 year plan to end homelessness worked? We're 10 years into it and look where we're at. How about Missoula's affordable housing plan? I believe Missoulians can reflect on the past four years and make up their own minds. As we see, the more local government decides to involve itself, less able it is to do any of those things well or efficiently. And as we all know, the words government and efficiency never go together. My belief in local government is we are the stewards of the people's hard earned money. As such, would be my responsibility to help them to use it wisely. How they want it spent, not how I would like to see it spent myself. In these past few years, it's become clear to me. Most of our local elected officials have forgotten the premise that the money belongs to Missoulians. Not in account for whatever pet projects might count in mind. Yet we tax more people out of the city year after year. If I'm elected to council, I'll support wise use of your tax dollars. Use TIF bonding judiciously and NASA handout for large corporations. Hold special revenue districts no more than the rate of inflation. I'll most certainly vote against wasteful spending. I'll make certain local government stays within the bounds of the C charter and not take away personal liberties. For housing affordability, I'll work to streamline the development review process, give developers predictability in the process, and encourage more entry level housing to include branding of town home developments, building infrastructure, and work with organizations like Neighbor Works and Habitat for Humanity. I'll work towards long term solutions for homeless crisis, not simply throwing money towards more temporary shelters like we discussed, but, you know, more long term solutions. Look at our mobile support units, holding those in drug corridors committed crimes accountable for their actions and supporting programs for Missoula Chamber and State Department of Labor and job training assistance programs to get folks back on their feet. For emergency services, I'll fight to ensure that requests from our chiefs for personnel, train and equipment get full funding. That wasn't the case this last budget year, but I'll hold them accountable. I'll make sure it comes up in council meetings that they get what they ask for. In closing, if I'm elected, I'm going to keep an open mind on things that come before me. Use my personal experience in local government to bring ideas to the table and reach sound decisions. That to me is real leadership and real common sense that's expected from fellow Missoulians. I thank you all for your time and I hope to hear your vote come November 2nd. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Bob Campbell. And now we move to Tom Taylor.
Thank you very much for inviting me to this. This has been a, it's been a journey to say the least. I've, I've learned a lot. I've met a lot of new people. I've met a lot of different people in my ward. I met new neighbors that I didn't know before. I, I've enjoyed it. The entire time that my family's lived there, we've, uh, we've, we've grown. We've seen Missoula grow. We've seen new neighbors come and go. It's gone for the better, I would say. There's a, when receiving tax bills, I'm just like everybody else. I go through and I dig it and I don't really, I don't really appreciate where a lot of it's going. And a lot of it, I want to understand where it's going, where it's coming from. We know that it only comes from the taxpayers. It needs to go towards programs that they enjoy, programs that they need, things like that help out sidewalks, parks, things like that, streamlining the developments, streamlining the development process right now. Right now it's five or six months to get a house plan sent through. For the most part, that's fairly acceptable. There's a lot of items on there that don't meet those requirements that need to be dealt with. Large developments, it's upwards of a year and a half. And then the process itself is, uh, there's some double dipping involved that I see on my end of it where people have, there's a, the city's overstepping where I think like engineers need to be doing their portion on projects. That's something that's come up in recent years and all it does is it slows things down. And every one day that there's not a house being built, that's one less that we don't have for somebody else. Affordable housing is something everybody always brings up and homelessness always gets brought up. But we can't treat the homeless like criminals. We do need to work on like the mental health issues. The, the mobile crisis team, I hope that they actually are being used as they should be used, not just taking people and throwing them in jail because we all know that that's not an answer or a solution. It shouldn't be illegal to be poor in Missoula. It's what it comes down to. We should encourage that. And then people that can't seem to learn, they do need to be dealt with as they should. But some programs need to be pushed forward and it's, uh, it's always a, an interesting, interesting topic with many different people. So anyways.
Is, are you, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. We now go, excuse me. Thank you, Tom Taylor. Yes. I want to make sure everybody hears your full name at the end here. We'll now go to Stacy Anderson.
Thanks so much. I want to thank the Office of Neighborhoods and League of Women Voters for putting together tonight's forum and the subsequent forums that are coming later in the coming weeks. I want to thank all those Missoulians who joined us tonight and heard a really robust discussion. I'm running for reelection because I think we need continued common sense leadership and critical thinkers on council who are willing to show up and do the hard work. And that is what I strive to bring. As we emerge from this pandemic, we need to ensure that we're balancing the needs of all Missoulians. The issues we faced prior to 2020 have greatly exacerbated by the pandemic. We need even more progress on affordable housing in Missoula, improving social and economic inequality and investing in local infrastructure. When I first ran, I said it was because I wanted a Missoula that worked for everyone and I still do. What that means and the role of city government has evolved over my tenure in council and was thrown a major curve ball by the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the effects of legislation passed at the state legislature and the federal government. We have done important work over the last four years. And I'm proud to have supported projects, projects like the Registered Apprentice Program, the adoption of a clean energy by 2030 initiative. As Chair of the Public Safety and Health Committee, I was a critical part of bringing on Missoula's Mobile Healthist, Mobile Crisis Unit. I was proud to have supported the adoption of our comprehensive housing plan, A Place to Call Home, and one of its key cornerstone components, which was the creation and funding of the, of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In the next coming, in the coming year, we will have the state's largest affordable housing complex coming online. The Velagio program, which was made possible by innovative tax funding from the state government, will have over 200 units for those in our, our community who are currently priced out of the rental market. It is focused on people who are making below area median income of 60%. We additionally have the creation of the Trinity Housing Projects, which will have another 200 units coming online the following year, as well as the Navigation Center and the Low Barrier Housing. So we are doing things. We have stood up innovative programs and partnerships with local elementary schools and our Parks and Recs Department, which currently has a waiting list of over two kids per each slot filled. I am honored to have been a part of these conversations over the last year. We still have many challenges facing us and we have, we need collaborative thinkers and workers. Not one person can solve all the problems. And we need to can find ways to balance community growth and the quality of life Missoulians deserve, as well as balance affordability and deliver high quality government services. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stacy Anderson. And now we go to Kristin Jordan.
Thank you, Nancy. I also would like to start off by thanking Missoula Neighborhoods and the League of Women Voters of Missoula for providing this opportunity for us all to come together and answer questions from constituents. I just want to reiterate my platform, which is to use data to make decision, data driven, or excuse me, to use data in decision making. I think it's really important to make sure that we understand what the problem is and we understand how our approaches are working. I think that it's pretty easy to sit back and say that things aren't working or they haven't been effective. But I would like to say, where's the data? You know, anecdotally, we can say whatever we want, but when we really look at, at robust data, we can make really informed decisions and we can see what's working. And I also want to remind folks that I am a unifier. I really like to look for the common ground. I think when you sit down and talk to somebody, it's really hard to hate up close, as Brene Brown says. And it's really important for us to sit down with one another and get to know each other and find out what we care about and why we might have our particular lenses that we're using to, to make decisions. I also want to be really available to voters. I have a website and a phone number and you can reach me through Facebook. I want to hear from you. I want to know what your concerns are. I want to know what keeps you up at night. And perhaps maybe even what you like about city government. You know, maybe there's some things that we are doing well and I'd like to hear from you. And I think it's really important to sit down and ask yourself, what is the role of government? Is the role of government to cut services? Is it to make sure that everybody has to fend for themselves? Or is the role of government to manage services that collectively benefit the, 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 the local jurisdiction? I think it's really short sighted to say that we should cut taxes and rely on private nonprofits profits to fill in the space. Because again, I ask you, what is the role of government? The role of government is to provide a social safety net to make sure that we have things that help us live and work in peace. I would also like to, oh shoot, I just lost my train of thought. That's awkward. Yes, I think that's actually it. I think I will sign off. I just want to thank you for the time. And again, please, if you're a constituent of mine, please reach out and let me know if you have any questions, comments or concerns. And I thank my opposing candidate for robust discussion. And it was really great to hear from Bob and Stacy as well on their issues. I've learned a lot tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kristin. I would like to just thank all of you, all of you four candidates for city council, Bob Campbell and Stacy Anderson running in Ward Five, and Tom Taylor and Kristin Jordan running in Ward Six, to thank all four of you for being willing to run in the first place and to be willing to provide your services to the, on behalf of the city of Missoula and in being a councilman if you are elected. We can't have a wonderful city government if we don't have people willing to step forward like you are stepping forward now. So thank you very much for that. I'd also like to thank the staff at Missoula Neighborhoods, Colin Woodrow and Kelly Elam for their work in organizing this forum. Just a note to all of you about voting. November 2nd is Election Day and this is an all mail in ballot election. Ballots will be mailed to voters about 20 days before the election. So start watching for those ballots to arrive about that time. They may be returned in the mail. The ballots can be returned in the mail or in person to the Missoula County Elections Office. But they must be received by the Missoula County Elections Office by Election Day, November 2nd at 8:00 P M. Any ballot received after that cannot be counted. Now you must be registered to vote in this election and you must be listed as an active voter on the registration rolls in order to receive a ballot. So if you have any, any doubts about your registration status, be sure to go to the My Voter page, which is on the Montana Secretary of State's website. And you can look up your status there, double check that your address is correct and that you are listed as an active voter. If you're not registered to vote, we recommend you to also go to the Secretary of State's website where you can download the form and fill it out and send it in. Or you can call or visit the Missoula County Elections Office itself. Just be sure you do that by September 30th, if you're going to do it by mail, because we want to be sure that it gets there in time for you to be able to, to register during regular registration. If you miss that deadline, you'll have to go in in person for sure. The Missoula County Elections Office phone number is 406-258-4751 and their address is 140 North Russell. So on behalf of the Missoula League of Women Voters, thank you for joining us this evening. And remember, your vote counts. I'd like to now turn it over to Colin of Missoula Neighborhoods.
Thank you so much, Nancy. Thank you so much for moderating the League of Women Voters of Missoula. Did such a great job. Thank you to the candidates. And a big shout out to, to Rick and MCAT for making this available to our community. I just also want to thank all those who submitted questions. We got a series of questions. And we have two more candidate forums coming up, the subsequent two Wednesday nights. So we do hope you'll submit questions by noon on Monday before those candidate forums. So hopefully we'll see you or you'll join us and see us on the 6th at 6:30 for Ward Three and Four, and Wednesday the 13th for Ward One and Two. With that, on behalf of Missoula Neighborhoods, thank you for joining us. And thank you for your participation and good luck with your elections. Thank you. Have a good night.